Being led by Mr. Bue.
Led by the United States of America. United Republic of the First United States. One nation, under God. Indivisible, with liberty, justice.
Welcome to our first regular meeting of the Village of Ballston Spa Board Trustees for the month of September, September 9, 2024. Can I get a motion that the minutes of the August 26, 2024 meeting be approved? Trustee Fundanza.
Second.
Trustee Vasco, discussion. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. No presentations tonight. One add-on motion that I'll let you know about now. Let me make sure I read it out correctly here. Thank you, Carla, for putting this together earlier after a meeting we had. It is a motion to accept change order number one in an amount not to exceed $10,000 as a result of DOT requirements for the permit for work to be performed on Union Fire Company's apron sidewalk project, conditioned on approval by property owner Union Fire Company Number Two Incorporated. That will be an add-on motion in the main motions. That's section seven of the meeting. That was added on late due to the condition of the DOT permit and the added work that was being requested, becoming known on Friday late afternoon in a meeting that transpired today, between JAG, which is the contractor that was successful bidder, Labella, and Carla as well with me in that meeting. And so we got to work to make sure we were able to get that on for tonight so that it can be worked starting on Monday. So that is an add-on motion. And so you can give public comment on that coming up here for agenda items only. As always, I remind those on Zoom that this is the time to raise your hand if you would like to comment on agenda items. Three minutes per speaker. Who would like to speak? Liz, I'm shocked.
Liz Kornos, 89. Hi. I'd like to comment on motion seven A. The retainer agreement between Ballston Spa and Robert King Esquire.
That's the list. Somebody.
Sorry. In the attachments, it says that they're going to be retained for filing and litigation of a civil suit for damages due to soil and water contamination against the defendants who manufactured, marketed, distributed, or sold products containing PFAS, including but not limited to film-forming foam, AFF, a firefighting product. And then it goes on to say it's also for PFAS. Has our fire department used firefighting foam? Where is this potential contamination? Is our water contaminated? Is our soil contaminated? Like to know, you know, if we're retaining a lawyer to potentially, you know, offer a suit against these folks. I think it would be in the public's interest to know where, when, how, et cetera. Thank you.
Liz, just to clarify, this being the proper time to do it, I'm concerned. PFAS lawsuits are a very, very common thing right now throughout the country. This was something that has led to several settlements for water providers in the country. Glendale, for instance, I think is up for up to $3 million related to their contamination or analysis or whatever have you in their situation. In the Village of Ballston Spa, we have a trace amount well below the amount that is of concern to the state and to the federal government. We get our pieces of pie per se because this may lead to additional monitoring, testing. You know, if it comes down to maybe a different filtration methodology later on, it's based on the wells. So in other words, where the water is being produced or taken out of the ground is the concern. And so the probable locationing situation that's going on, if there's any trace, isn't from necessarily our firefighters because that's anyway, well, Milton, where our water sources are. But the airport, airports are well-known for utilization of products that could have PFAS, et cetera, in there. And so the first step that will occur is if approved, they're going to actually send their own testing and write it off against any award we get later on, if we get an award later on. They will have all of our wells tested for the amounts. The amount of money that you're eligible for is based on concentration in the worst well and the amount of production essentially. It's an equation well beyond me and you, I think, and getting to sit down in the discussion was interesting to say the least. But this firm is one of two firms in the state that is highly concentrated on this. And they, the other one is in New York City. These folks are much more closer to home in the Rochester area. And so they are going to go out. If they get us an award, they get a piece of that pie, as you could probably imagine. If they don't, we owe nothing. And so we're just trying to get what's due to us because of this contamination level, which is, as I said, trace in the situation, and we will keep monitoring it as that.
So we measured for this, these contracts?
We measured for everything, basically, in our water quality reports. So these are publicly posted. In fact, this is how law firms know to reach out to different municipalities, say, hey, you got a little bit in your water, so okay, let's go get the money for you that you deserve.
Where are they posted? We used to get these in the mail every year. The resident used to get a water quality report, so we haven't.
Jennifer is the keeper of the water quality reports generally.
2022. I don't have 2023.
Yeah, we're finishing up 2023.
I have up to date, so I possibly can be, and that's still too useful.
So they would type in under the search water quality or what?
It's just, you can just, I mean, it's just a text.
But to find.
He's saying just search one.
How do you search for it? You just search water quality?
The same way you go to like a dusty page or the art community page where a firm has their own page, and it's right on the left.
All right. Thank you, Jennifer. And thank you. Who's up? Anybody? Single. I see somebody prying somebody else in the audience. Okay. I'm going to take that as a no, and we will close public comment at this point. There will be another public comment session later on for any items, so feel free to do that. Can I get a motion to approve the items? Let me actually say that number one is dropped from this because it is canceled. So there's only number two and number three. Does anybody want to withdraw two or three from the consent agenda to discuss its individual? Hearing nothing of this sort, can I get a motion to approve the items on the following consent agenda with the exception of number one? Trustee Fundanza. Trustee Price Bush, discussion. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. I get a motion that the DPW be authorized spending amount of $12,058 for success for street signs. Trustee Fundanza. Trustee Price Bush, discussion.
So can I send you a question a couple of days ago about this? Because a couple of years, two years ago, I thought that DPW did a full assessment and that we replaced all the signs for about $15,000 accounting funds. So is that not the case? We have another 109 signs.
Well, we didn't do all the signs, and so we're trying to create uniform signage throughout the village for branding purposes. So this, I believe, Jennifer, this would complete it?
Yeah. This is the other half. We did half last time.
Discussion. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Got to get a motion approving the attached tainer agreement between the Village of Ballston Spa and Robert King Esquire related to special litigation and authorizing the merit-execute agreement. Trustee Fundanza. Trustee Vasco, discussion. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. I get a motion approving the spending by the Ballston Spa Fire Department of $38,611.27 for emergency repairs to truck 14-3. This truck was previously approved for $26,422.40 of spending on July 22, 2024. However, the labor necessary to handle corrosion and other work caused excessive cost to be incurred. Trustee Fundanza.
Second.
Trustee Raymond, discussion. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. I get a motion approving the agreement between the Village of Ballston Spa and local government sports services LLC, which is LGSS, related to accounting services and authorizing the merit to execute the agreement. Trustee Fundanza. Trustee Price Bush, discussion.
So can you please explain most?
We are looking to extend our agreement with our accounting firm.
Right. So this is the same accounting firm as what we had before.
EFBR spun off their government solutions accounting arm, and so LGSS, which we've been using for the past year in name, but it's the same people. They just spun off.
Okay.
Yeah.
And this contract is similar to what was previous?
Well, it's going to remove payroll services because we had a kind of a nightmarish payroll move to ADP run, and we are seeking out other payroll services that already have better customer service, let's say domestic customer service as well. Like this, that was one of the things that even LGSS suffers with with ADP, except it takes them way too long to get customer service responses because of base of customer service representatives. So we're working on that with their help, and that's why there's some additional costs coming up here for the last part of the year because it can help us transition. We're going to enhance retirement system. We're making sure we clean up the entire retirement system because of some legacy issues for years apparently that were never solved with our retirement reports. So we're literally working daily with folks in LGSS to get the corrections in. And we're also getting Rebecca and Melissa training for enhanced retirement system so that we can fully get transitioned over on the state.
And it's one-year contract?
It is one year. June to, they basically thought our fiscal year.
And we don't have to go send it out to bid?
No. In fact, there are so few left in this area for municipal accounting that we were just talking about this earlier today. It's just maybe a couple of firms left in the state that really want to even touch this stuff anymore. So we're lucky to have LGSS with us. Thank you. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Got to get a motion approving the attached agreement between the village and Studio A for landscape architecture and civil engineering services, Whiswell Park Phase One construction implementation, and authorizing the merit to execute the agreement. Trustee Fundanza.
Second.
Trustee Raymond, discussion.
I'm just curious. I know I'd send you an email.
About the crossover between Labella. I talked to Labella today. They were in my office about the other thing, and so let me give you the breakdown on that. I explained what was going on. They said, hey, we're doing the sewer. That's all we're doing. We will give the CAD over to Studio A so they can work around it. And if they need any other backup, they'll charge us on normal engineering hours, but it's unlikely they will because what's happening is the other underground work is just the water movement to the corner and any conduit for, as you were asking for, the street lamps or the lamps with the power as well. So we're going to try to conduit that so we don't have to re-dig up the ground a second time when we're putting down all the, you know, different.
That was my main concern, is that we're going to dig it all up and then restore it.
Yeah, definitely. They're going to work together, Ruben, one of our lead engineers at Labella, understands fully what's going on and endorsed the approach fully today, so just wanted to let you know that after I got a chance to talk to him about it.
Okay. The timing is what, after the car show sometimes?
Right. We have to go to bid with the sewer right now. They're finishing up that document, so we're good. They're at the end of season, but they still can get that work done. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Mayor's announcements. Oh, hi. Yeah, yeah. Can I get a motion? Boy, you jumped on me quick.
I just want to say that, just as we discussed before, if the motion could include like the cost of the contract.
Sorry, this was the last thing I added at the last second on Friday because I almost forgot to add it. We had gotten it right after the last meeting. I tracked it back.
And what line item will it come out of, do you think?
Well, this goes from ultimately the park money from Wizel.
But we're going to spend this before we get that money?
For now, we'll do, yes, to a degree. I don't believe we budget this, no. Not directly because we expected the Wizel money. Can I get, yeah, can I get a motion to accept change order number one in an amount not to exceed $10,000 as a result of DOT requirements for permit for work to be performed on Union Fire Company's apron sidewalk project, conditioned on approval by property owner Union Fire Company Number Two Incorporated? Trustee Fundanza. Trustee Price Bush, discussion. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Mayor's announcements now. Just a reminder that 9/11 ceremony is going to be Wednesday at 7:00 PM in front of village offices at 66 Front Street. Please attend if you can. We're getting far and further and further away where people weren't even born. A chunk of folks to remember what 9/11 meant or was, and so we would love to have as many folks here as possible to help keep the memory alive, keep, you know, all the folks we lost in our minds for a day that will obviously never be forgotten by those that had the experience, including here in the village. Also, just want to send a condolences to the Ballston Spa Central School District on the passing of Dave Sunkus, the athletic director, longtime faculty member administrator, et cetera, coach over there. Dave was a very, very dedicated employee that touched many lives. You can see it from my Facebook announcement on Saturday night after Dr. Duke had put out his letter to the school district public. Folks were very, very upset about what happened because he did mentor so many, and it's a big loss. Services are Thursday afternoon at Armor Funeral Home, and Friday morning, a mass Christian burial is going to be at St. Mary's Church in Mourning on Friday. So please attend if you can, at least one of the services we had any connection with Dave to let his family, his wife and three kids, know of our appreciation for him. We lost him way too early. I believe the age of 45. He was one week short. His 46th birthday, I believe. Treasury report. It's called the PR here. That's funny. LGSS is working on our August bank reconciliations as of the state reports to follow up to the next bill board meeting on September 23rd. Revenues, preliminary revenues, total year-to-date revenues on the statement of revenues and expenditures in general funded $3,078,374. And she has broken down, as Melissa, our treasurer, the major revenues reported in August, including property tax, meter of water sales, non-property tax distribution by the county, pool fees and other things, licenses and permits was $500,000 without poll. So that's all I have. Let's start with Sean on liaison reports.
Spoke with Jeff and paving, paving, paving. He's done some prep work. Already into the paving schedule a little bit. But that is for the next month or so is going to be his main focus is hitting all the roads we have listed for paving. The other thing you want me to mention is bag and bundle until after October 15th because with the paving schedule, he's not really going to be able to get to anything until that point. So those are the two major points he wanted me to make.
And a quick note, we will release the full list officially of Dave's streets. Just checking budget as well. Make sure he's good to go, so we don't prematurely announce those until we get the full high sign from him. Although I think it's no secret that Prospect Street still is being marked, so that might not be a secret.
Yeah.
Mary.
As the mayor had mentioned, the 9/11 ceremony, and as he had mentioned, a lot of people really don't remember what happened, the younger people. But it is a good way to show the families and survivors gratitude for what they have once paid up for a lot of strangers. So try to be there. It's beautiful. The library, the contract bids for phase one closed on September 5th, and the library board will be meeting to discuss the results. And during the construction of phase one, the storytime will be held at the ACC on Thursdays at 10:00 AM. And the regular events such as the voter registration, the reading to a therapy dog on September 21st, and the adults book club on September 25th will still be held upstairs.
Just to alert both the board and the public, there may be a need for me to call a special meeting with regard to the library's bid process as we were attempting to make this meeting a meeting where we would pick the bidders and to have a presentation about it, et cetera. The timing didn't work for a couple of reasons. There were some hiccups in terms of some additional work that needs to be done related to the bid evaluation process. And also, the DLD grant has not been received yet by the village, and so we want to make sure we have that in hand before we start guaranteeing anybody money because that's $500,000, I think, and change. So we're working on, it should be any week now, not any day now with respect to that. Once we see it, once the library board votes on the bidding approvals, we validate those approvals. So I might be calling a special meeting so that we don't lose time. They would like to get things in a certain position here because of the winter, get it covered up and moving along so that there's no extra delays in that process. So beware of that. I did call a special meeting. That would be the likely cause for that. For that.
Frank, can I just ask a question?
Sure.
Are we going to be in this room like two weeks or?
It's a meeting-by-meeting process or basis right now. So yeah, just check, check the Facebook page. Terry keeps it up to date with respect to where we'll be.
I don't have a lot tonight. BSBPA, just a reminder, the farmer's market will be running later this, longer this year until October 5th. Thursday is four to seven, and then Saturday, nine to one. And Dana told me to let people know that Ted's will be there on Thursday. And the car show is set to be on October 13th, and they're looking for volunteers. So reach out to Dana, dana@ballston.org. That's what I have. The fire department, just to give an update of their August, you know, efforts and what they've been doing. There were 42 emergency calls in last month. 19 were general alarms in the fire district, including one reported structured fire in the town of Milton. They also responded to seven mutual aid structured fire responses, five motor vehicle accidents, and 11 other miscellaneous responses. Members have given more than 800 man-hours of emergency response during that month. The total for the year so far is 322 responses, and that equates to approximately 4,200 man-hours. It's incredible what they're doing for our community. Just an update on our equipment. 142 is still out of service with a transmission issue. They are currently getting it evaluated and will have repair costs to us so that we can, for our approval. You all saw all what had to be done for Engine 143. But on a positive note, Engine 141, our tanker 133, and then Rescue 134 completed their annual testing, and there were no additional expenses reported. And ladder 132 completed its annual pump testing. And just to thank them again, they've been doing a lot of community education, and last month they did three fire prevention education presentations.
Thanks, Beth.
The parking fee board does not have a lot to report. They say they're excited to report the improvements in Little Park and they continue working with Studio A. Their next meeting is September 17th at 7:00 PM for a new cooperative extension. The committee on the arts has some events coming up. They can take art classes Saturdays till 3:00 PM at Brookside Museum. On 10/26, it was Create with Collage. Eleven to, it's printmaking card. November 9th is all tiles. And these classes are free to the public with all supplies provided. However, pre-registration is required and space is limited. So encourage people to sign it now as the Currier Spot, and the link is on their Facebook page, and I don't know if it's on the website.
The flyer that they sent me at the beginning of the season is up on the website, but I just made a note to repost it so it kind of refreshes itself. And the link for all of each individual thing for each individual Facebook page is listed in that.
Great, thank you. Their next meeting is, and people can register for one, two, or three classes as well. Here twice. Next meeting is September 18th at the Real McCoy. And they are, you know, still waiting for instructions on where else they should be meeting in September.
Good, thank you. No old business, no new business. No here. Public comment on any issue. Again, if you're in Zoom, this is the time to raise your hand and let us know you wanted to give a public comment. Three minutes is the limit on any issue. Who would like to speak? Yes, sir. He says yes this time. Yes, you do. Thank you.
Name's Michael Torgan. I'm on 59 Hyde Boulevard, 35-year resident on Hyde Boulevard. It's concerning the crosswalk and stop signs. I'm very appreciative of being a 35-year resident, seeing the cars constantly speed down the street all the time. I love the crosswalks. I love the crosswalk signs. The stop signs, however, I don't like because it's basically in front of my house. And I get cars constantly backing up where I have trouble getting out of the driveway. I'm listening to the noise. I can't open up the windows when it's a nice night to get to sleep. You got cars that come, stop, rev their engines, and take off. My consideration and also concern is, why is there a stop sign there? There's two other crosswalks on Hyde Boulevard. Why aren't there stop signs there? And if you drive around the village where there's crosswalks and there's no stop signs, why aren't there stop signs there? So I don't understand why there's a stop sign there. I think a simple solution would be just to put like down in Stewart's off of East High. When you're on the bike path, you just press a button and it lights up a sign, and that tells people, hey, I'm on a cross. The other issue is now that I'm retired, I sit home and I spend a day, and there weren't even 10 people that crossed that crosswalk. So anyways, again, I'm just really appreciative of the effort that's being put in to address those concerns with the safety of the citizens of Ballston Spa.
Thank you. Thank you. And just to answer the question about by that one, that is directly leading to Chapman Street, Malta Avenue School. So that's why that one was chosen out of the three, and it's almost dead center for me to get down to in that situation. Anybody else? Was that a hint?
I know what he's talking about. Ellie Dillon, but I'm representing the museum tonight, 76 Milton Avenue. I just wanted to remind everybody that we are the visitor's center for the Village of Ballston Spa. The map guide that the BSBPA puts out is extremely popular, but if you're not on that map guide, there's no way that people coming in will know where to go. We do charge admission now, but the visitor's center is right by the front door, so there's no, and no charge. You just go in and get it. And what I'm asking everybody here is to please tell the businesses that you visit in the village to put their brochures in the museum because people, it's catching on and people are coming in and asking specifically what to do. And back to the stop sign. Now I'm Ellie Dillon, 116 Malta Avenue. The stop sign, I know what you're saying, and I think it's in our nature, or somebody's nature, to see that stop sign and then floor it. On Malta Avenue, as soon as they get behind the school and they have that stop sign and they have that straightaway right in front of our house, it's horrific. And I don't want to point fingers, but it's a lot of trucks, and they're not even supposed to be on Malta Avenue. But it is a concern, and I don't know what would be the best solution because we need to slow down Hyde Boulevard and Malta Avenue.
I'm going to give you an observation, which I'm going to actually be trying to be the campaign moving in the village on. Rolling stops are just ridiculous. It is, I know it's everywhere, but we can do better here in the village as residents and nearby community members that see it. And so I'm going to try to work with our police department. And so I'm going to try to work with our police department and others to see if we can, in the same vein as, you know, ice cream tickets. Say, I kids wearing helmets and bicycles and the gift cards that we're doing for serving laws during Christmas time. Do something to incentivize and remind everybody to stop at a stop sign, not roll through a stop sign.
Nighttime, nighttime is.
I get it.
Is a playground.
I get it. But you know, it, it doesn't make it right, you know, whether you like a stop sign or not, it doesn't make it right. You're still supposed to observe the law.
I don't know what the solution is, except just lay down in the road. I'm not going to do that.
Ellie, I don't want to clean it up something there.
Please reach out to the businesses in the village when you're in there and say, put your things in the, in the, in the museum. We, over the past summer, we had reached, had cooperative and collaborative events with Real McCoy, Whistling Kettle, Nightshade, Nightshade.
Nightworks.
Nightworks. So people are in and out and I think you should take advantage.
Are you keeping numbers of visitors?
We have, we have a running tally of visitors, not specifically for the visitor's center, but to come into the museum.
Ellie, you're the public bathroom with the village?
Yes, we are.
Somebody came in and I pointed him in your direction the other day.
And they come in and I welcome them and I don't even charge them admission.
Thank you. Anybody else? I see somebody actually on Zoom while we go there. Hi Natasha.
Hey, hi, everybody. I'm Natasha Pernica. I live at 56 Hyde Boulevard, which is right on the corner of Chapman and Hyde. And there's some conversation about the stop signs. And I guess I'm looking at a lot of different perspectives, but I asked my kids what they thought about the stop signs. My 14-year-old daughter likes the stop signs. She feels like car, she quote said, the cars actually stop when we're trying to cross the street. I asked my 12-year-old and he said he likes the stop sign because when he gets off the bus, because the bus stops there. Cars actually stop because I guess there's a problem with the cars stopping when the buses stop there on a regular basis. So, but the problem, but, but the question is, is the stop sign itself the right way to, to handle it? And I'm just wondering if there was any like study or official, like people who specialize in road safety. To, to see if that is in fact the, the right way to, to just make crossing a street more safer. If we should actually have a stop sign or if there's another way to handle the pedestrian crossing in a safe way. So just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you. It's a six-month test.
Could you guys hear me okay?
It's a six-month test and so we're going to take the feedback from everybody. And so, but I appreciate your kids' feedback for sure because they're the ones really, to me, that were contacted most with families. We've got a lot of feedback from folks that were concerned about crossing. And felt that their lives were in jeopardy whenever they tried it. So to hear that your kids think it is working actually means a lot. So thank you for that.
When, when is the test, six-month test already?
Six months after the Facebook post statement. We can go back and check it. We're not even close to it yet. So I haven't even thought about it. But we'll, we'll be reminding folks to give us some thoughts at that point. Okay.
I got one more.
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah.
Erin McCready?
Is this Erin McCready?
Yep, this is Erin McCready, 35 Hyde Boulevard. I just wanted to chime in on the stop sign as well. I cross there probably twice a day. And, and while I'm not an expert in traffic by any means, and I don't know if it is the best solution. I just wanted to say that it definitely has improved the safety, at least from my perspective. And so that's all I wanted to contribute.
Thanks, Erin. Appreciate that. Anybody else in the room? Yes, I think we're, we're Zoom participants that so far have their hands up. Seeing no hands. Other business, including but not limited to board response, public comment? I see people reaching.
Just, oh, sorry.
Yeah, Sean had his on it, but Sean, make sure you bring it forward. Oh, sure, sure. Sorry about that.
So I just wanted to respond to the comments Mr. Jordan made. That is one of the problems when you put in an always stop. There's study after study in municipality after municipality that whenever you put a stop sign in on a, on a link. It makes people drive faster on the, you know, on the adjacent roadways to that full four-way stop. Because they try to make up the time. That's just human nature. That particular location, there was never actually an engineering study conducted using the guidance that the Federal Highway Administration puts out regarding warrants for always stop control. You know, that, you know, usually that's done ahead of time before you do an installation. So that you can see if, A, based on, you know, empirical data, tons of study and analysis by experts in the field. If that stop signs are actually warranted. There is always the benefit of people stopping all the time when it becomes, you know, with pedestrians. However, you know, there's also the detriment. It seriously decreases operations of that intersection, traffic operations. It increases noise pollution, increases air pollution. Those are just ancillary things that happen whenever you put in, you know, an always stop control. They are actually, believe it or not, more pollutant than a three-color signal when it comes to noise and air pollution. So. You know, pick your poison. You want increased pedestrian safety theoretically. Though your comment about what's described as a RFB or rapid or rectangular rapid flashing beacon that you see at a lot of crosswalks. There's a lot of studies that indicate that those are actually a, a better, more precise tool for pedestrian safety. Because they only light up when there's pedestrians crossing. Where, you know, a stop sign is a static sign. And as we know, a lot of times, static signs eventually people ignore, which goes to some of the argument. Or what the mayor mentioned about rolling stops. There's been a lot of studies, engineering studies indicating the reason that folks rolling stop is because of overuse of stop signs. They're put places where they're simply not warranted or not needed. So people just fully over time disregard them unless they're at a location where, yeah, you better stop or there's going to be a problem. Where there's plenty of sight distance, where it's relatively low speeds. The use of a stop sign may not be necessary, particularly in an always scenario. I mean, you always have to decide whether, what's a minor street and what's a major street. And minor streets obviously should have some sort of traffic control. But I hope that answered your question.
Oh, it does. It does. Yeah, yeah. And it's up to the individual to make sure. Because even if you have stop signs and you got the crosswalk, you can still be crossing and people are still going to come at you sometimes. You know, I mean, I go to Saratoga a lot of times and, you know, it says you can walk. Cars sometimes roll down the windows and they have you, you hurry up and get across the street. Even though you're legally entitled to walk across the street, but it's the same thing. Would I trust it 100%? If I had kids and I was trying to walk them across and, you know, your stop over here and I'm on the opposite side and the other stop sign and I'm crossing. I'm going to keep my eye on it. I'm not just going to put my head down and be looking at my phone and walking across. So I think it's adamant on the people themselves to be a little bit responsible.
Sorry, are you?
So I got one more thing. So the Federal Highway Administration puts out a, publishes a guide. Guidance and standards accepted engineering practice called Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices. Within that, chapter 2B, section 2B, point 12, talks about always stop control. And there's five distinct warrants that you meet one or more, you would consider an always stop control.
I gotta interrupt you though. While the MUTCD is the easiest way to warrant a stop sign, it is not the only way. And that came directly from our engineers at Labella with respect to it. There are other ways to create or justify the need for MUTCD. It's not a bible per se, but it's a method.
Absolutely. It's not regulations. It's guidance. But it's based on the most data that, that there is. It's been the accepted engineering practice for decades and decades. So as it is not a bible per se, it is a gold standard in which things are, you know, studies and analysis of these things are done. You can come up with other safety factors. That is one of, one of the warrants is other safety factors, which would include pedestrian bicyclist activity. And but again, there's a collection of data. And one of the data points that would be collected in that particular thing is you would count during peak pedestrian hours. How many times a pedestrian and a car are at the intersection at the same time? Because that represents a potential pedestrian vehicle conflict. And depending on how many are there, if there's very few, a stop sign is probably not going to help the situation. Because there's a lot, then it certainly could help the situation. So, but those types of analysis and studies and data collection are really necessary to definitively determine. I mean, obviously there's a caveat in anything we do called engineering judgment. Which basically says, well, after all this, if you still think you might need it, then you go ahead. But even that's usually based on some kind of accepted standard practices. So.
Okay, thank you. I, I'm really glad we're doing this test and I'm sorry that it's been, you're uncomfortable and it's been frustrating for you guys. And I certainly don't think anybody wants that, but I will say as somebody who drives that, I think overall, at least my aspirations is different. You guys live on the street. I think drivers are a lot more respectful than they used to be, it used to be, which is to me a little bit more encouraging to see. But what I, I will say as somebody who's a, a out of shape cyclist. I hadn't rode my bike all season and I, I went last week. I, I have to take, you know, Ralph Street to, to Hyde Boulevard to catch the trailhead eventually. On for Smith. And I was a lot more comfortable. I think overall, and I don't think traffic, how we manage our traffic, how we manage pedestrian safety is like a one solution thing. There was a multiple, multiple sets of things that we did on Hyde Boulevard. And I have to say overall, I felt more comfortable there as a cyclist.
The, you know, speed tells you your speed. That's the one.
Sure. I'm sorry. I understand. I'm sorry. And let me continue. It's part of it. All three things I think have, and again, at least what I have seen, I've seen people, you know, be more respectful to, to people trying to cross. And again, that's just the observations I've had. I have to take that route to go to Albany for work every day. But again, this is a, this is a test. I'd like to hear from not only residents, but people that are pedestrians, people that are cyclists, people that are drivers. You know, I hope that other efforts to encourage respectful driving and respectful, you know, just behavior overall. Responsible behavior. Like this is not a one solution thing. There's a larger effort overall in the village that we're just trying to have more manageable traffic, more manageable controls for pedestrians. And I, I think it's a number of things. It's not one solution. Again, I, I'm sorry. I appreciate you guys telling us this. I hope to hear from other residents as well. But I, we'll have a few more months of this. I don't remember when we started either, but you know.
Four and a half months.
Yeah, hopefully we can get some feedback from other folks as well.
And one thing I should tell you, we are actually, Officer Ackley, I know this for a fact. Couple Saturdays ago stopped somebody for peeling out after a stop sign on Hyde Street and Eastern, I want to say it was. And actually chased them onto Hyde Boulevard, probably could have done it right in front of your stop sign. But we are attuned to some of the alignments that come with stop signs or other devices out there. And trying to make sure that people are not doing some of the things that you're suggesting. I think, I can't remember if it was you or somebody, your neighbor that had told me about somebody who on Facebook suggested they were going to lay on their horn in their truck. Because they were upset that somebody wanted to stop sign in the street. Well, first off, it was a collective decision made by the village. Second, they apparently actually went through with it. And we, we made it clear on Facebook to the person and also the place that, that is not going to be stood for. And that would be an automatic ticket and if not works because of the intentionality of doing something like that. So we are not going to stand for that. We're not going to stand for any more burden than necessary in this type of situation. So please just let me know if something is going wrong and I will make sure it's taken out immediately.
I'd like to make comments. So in terms of the six-month test. What are the criteria for the test about whether it works or not? It's the number of comments you get for or against it. That's basically anecdotal, you know, opinion poll.
We have several departments in our village, including BPW, police and fire that are constantly through the intersection. School district as well. And so going back to all the people that gave us face opinions in the first place, which included all those entities slash people. To see what do you think? What, what is your opinion of how it works? Did it increase safety or do you decrease safety? Because at the end of the day, welcome to Ballston Spa, where community matters. And we value opinions of our neighbors to make sure that we're doing the right things generally. Not everybody necessarily subscribes to that, but most people do.
But we're going to ask members of your administration, years of your administration, are we asking the public? Are we going to ask the public?
I think I've said that in the list.
Well, I was asking.
I, I, at this point, Ben, you wonder why two, a couple of days ago, I don't respond to your questions because you just try to make it for theatrics. As you always used to try to accuse me of and everything. That's unnecessary.
You don't need to get personal, Frank. I'm asking a question. It's a legitimate question.
No, you, you just did.
You, you just, you, you just said, you just said you're going to ask members of your departments. And what I was asking is are you going to ask members of the public?
Ben, it is not my departments. Dave Bush was the police chief before I started. Mike Bayshore was in the leadership before I started. Jeff Garres has been here forever.
You're now their supervisor.
Okay, but.
So that you're a partner, Frank. It's okay.
No, they're, they are our departments as a village, Ben. That's ridiculous.
I guess what I'm suggesting is, I guess what I'm.
Yes, I did say public, but you just want to hear.
No, I guess what I'm suggesting is that we do solicit public input as part of this test. So. Yeah, good. So, well, when I just asked the question, that wasn't mentioned, but I'm glad, I'm glad this might be. But the most, the important thing to say is not going to, is that we bypassed the objective evaluation and.
Ben, what do you think of the stop sign operation so far?
That's unfortunate.
What do you think of the stop sign operation so far?
I think.
Tell me about your experience with those.
I will. I've gone, I go up and down.
Excuse me.
I go up and down Hyde Boulevard all the time. The your speed is signs work very well. I know that they just, and, and, and studies show that's the state of the art. The crosswalks that turn on with lights when someone's there, those are the state of the art and they work very well.
We don't have those there, so I'm asking you about the current conditions.
We could consider those.
I'm asking you how the current conditions Hyde Boulevard were viewed here.
I, I, I think it's better without the stop sign and, and just the your speed is sign because of the negative impacts and.
Which ones have the observer personally?
I go up and down the street all the time.
What are the negative impacts?
The negative impact are what I hear from the public.
We asked you your observations personally.
My observation personally?
Yes.
I think that it's a, a, a easier and more conducive to drive in a, below the speed limit when you don't have to stop a lot. So it's, it's better, yeah, it's, it's an easier drive and it's a safer drive.
Thank you, Ben. I'm just going to say, am I? I I'm just going to say, and Mary, did you have any, I'm sorry.
But, you know, this isn't, this isn't about my personal driving experience. It's about the people who live on the street and what they have to experience every day.
And you heard, you heard from a couple up there, you heard from the folks, everybody has different opinions on this. No, I'm sorry, public comments earlier, so at this point.
I just want to make sure the public is well represented in the decision of whether to keep the stop signs.
And they're going to be, Ben.
Great, thank you.
Public is a broad term also, and so there's going to be a lot of folks that are going to have a discussion on this when it comes to.
I will add that the folks that had positive responses also have nothing to compare it to, right? If they don't, they haven't seen an RFP there to see whether or not, oh, that works just as well or even better. I think that your speed is signs did control speed, which what I think was the actual auxiliary intent of the always stop was traffic calming. But I would, just two, two other things is, I'm going to include the chapter on always stop control as an attachment in the minutes. So, if anybody would like to read a specific warrant, they can.
That's not appropriate.
Why isn't appropriate an attachment in the minutes?
We don't permit attachments in that manner.
You want me to read it so that it can be? I certainly can.
Why don't you stay after and read it? Everybody wants to stick around here.
Oh, no, I'll read it right now. Okay, so section two being point one, two.
You stop it. There's no pendulum.
The provision of the following section describes warrants for the recommended engineering study to determine always stop control. Warrants are not a substitute for engineering judgment. The fact that a warrant for a particular traffic control device is not is met is not conclusive justification to install or not to install always stop controls. Because each intersection will have unique characteristics that affect its operational performance or safety. It is the engineering study for a given intersection that is ultimately the basis for a decision to install or not install always stop controls. Always stop controls at intersections with substantially differing approach volumes can reduce the effectiveness of these devices for all roadway users. There is a guidance to the warrants, the decision to establish always stop control and an unsignaled intersection should be based on an engineering study. The engineering study for always stop controls should include an analysis of factors related to the existing operation and safety at the intersection. The potential improve these conditions and the applicable factors contained in the following rules that always stop control warrants. These are the warrants. Warrant A, always stop control crash experience. Warrant B, sight distance. Warrant C, transition to signal control or transition to yield control at a circular intersection. Warrant D, eight-hour volume, including vehicles, pedestrians and bicyclists. Warrant E, always stop control E, other factors. Option, the decision to install always stop control on site road is open to public traffic, maybe based on an engineering study. Standard, the satisfaction of always stop control warrant or warrants shall not in itself require an installation of an always stop control at an unsignalled intersection. So, warrant A, always stop control may be installed in an intersection where study indicates a four-leg intersection that has five or more reported crashes in a twelve-month period or six or more reported crashes in a thirty-six-month period where the type is susceptible to correction by installation of an always stop control. For a three-leg intersection, there are four or more reported crashes in a twelve-month period or five or more reported crashes in a thirty-six-month period that were the type susceptible to correction by installation of an always stop control. Sight distance. Always stop control at an intersection where an engineering study indicates the sight distance on the minor road approach is controlled by stop signs is not adequate for a vehicle to turn onto or a major uncontrolled support. At such a location, road users after stopping cannot see conflicting traffic and is not able to negotiate the intersection unless conflicting cross traffic is also required to stop. Warrant C, this is for a circular intersection, which we don't have any. So, I'll skip that one. Always stop control warrant D, eight-hour volume. Always stop control may be installed in an intersection where an engineering study indicates. A, the combined motor vehicle bicycle pedestrian volume entering this intersection from major street approaches is at least three hundred units per hour for each of any eight hours of a typical day. And the combined motor vehicle bicycle and pedestrian volume entering the intersection from minor street approaches is at least two hundred units per hour for each day in any of the same eight hours. If the eighty-fifth percentile speed of the major street traffic exceeds forty miles per hour, the minimum vehicular volume warrants may be reduced to seventy percent of the values given in items A and B in paragraph one of this section. And then warrant E, other factors. Always stop control may be installed in an intersection where engineering study indicates that always stop control is needed due to other factors not addressed in other always stop control warrants. Such as other factors may include, but are not limited to, the following. The need to control left turn conflicts. An intersection of two residential neighborhood collector tour streets of similar design and operating characteristics where always stop control would improve traffic operational characteristics of the intersection or where a pedestrian or bicycle needs support the installation of a stop. Always stop control. That is the section. And I will submit this as an attachment to the minutes.
I understand how people are not put out, but you know, you're inconvenienced by the stop signs. And I think the purpose or one of the purposes was for safety, pedestrian safety. And hearing that Natasha's children felt safe getting off the bus and crossing the road.
They don't cross.
They don't pass the road. They cross. I thought she said. I think it's, you know, for pedestrian safety, especially for children. You know, having children who watch Tomita Avenue, watch Home Depot. I think it's worth a try to see if we can get people, you know, slowed down for the children, for the older people who are walking with their dogs. You know, younger people who are walking with their dogs. It's worth a try to just keep people safe, and we'll see where that goes in four and a half months.
It's all agreed for keeping people safe, but we need a metric. We actually need data. How many people actually use a crosswalk? We need to do some pedestrian counts and some bicycle counts and see how many actually conflict with vehicles. It's just science. I mean, if you don't like science, then yeah, you probably don't like a lot of what I said. But it's just scientific and engineering study that we're going to announce.
For the record, trustee Raymond is the department transportation engineer, in case you can't tell.
I think we've all discussed this at this point.
Sean, please provide all your research, Carla, on that. Thank you.
I have another topic, but I'll wait for.
Can I talk?
Yeah. Waiting for whatever you want to talk about.
Okay, with respect to this. I drive there. Ever since you reached out, I've driven there more than I normally would have. Just it's tested out to see, to witness that people are peeling through, not stopping, especially when the speed signs got moved to where they need to be away from those stop signs. And I got to be honest with you, I am proud of what we did there insofar as I have not ever seen it so calm overall. Now, again, this is not to say everybody, you know, adheres to everything. But people are just turning on to Hyde from Hyde, especially seeing the instant speed sign reaction. And I, you don't really get a chance to go much over thirty in that small stretch, but you can see that they're not flooring that. And so, it's allowing them because that side is where you'll hit the intersections earlier than when you come from Alta Avenue, obviously. And what it's doing is it's slowing it down from the start to the stop sign pretty well. And I don't see people generally flooring it. I I, you know, you can trail with behind somebody to tell what their speed is, see if they're catching up or not. And I can't go beyond thirty in that situation, usually if somebody's in front of me. Which means that something is inherently catching on with certain people, not everybody, certain people. In the other direction, I think the speed sign is currently in a good position to also slow them down from an early stage on Hyde Boulevard, take them to the stop sign. And again, it's such a short stretch to get to the high street stop sign. Now, I don't think it's flooring all the time either. I don't think the mentality for most people is to. Because now you've just been through a speed sign, a stop sign, and now you're kind of are in that, okay, I guess they mean business scenario at that point in time. So, I'm overall proud about what I've been witnessing, just as an observer. And we've been discussing this generally with our traffic, our licensed traffic engineer at La Bella, Doug Teeter. And he's actually coming up with some discussion or design, I should say, for possible always stop at Saratoga Avenue near Kent Street over there. Because that's kind of a failing intersection of sorts. It's mismarked. Yeah, basically, traffic almost running into each other the way that stop lines are. And so, he's taking a look at all that stuff. We were talking with him about just the general functioning of the Hyde Boulevard situation, and we had talked to other engineers as well for that. And they don't disagree with the general analysis that if you're having pedestrian safety issue, then utilization of stop signs is the first incremental step to use. Our RFPs are not only expensive, they also are an inconvenience too, because they're strobing inopportune times as well. And so, I don't know, are you directly in the corner? I I always forget if you're right there, right there. But so, I mean, there's there's pluses and minuses to everything in these situations. So, my long story short here is generally, I am proud of what we did because I think we took a street that has had a history of problems, a history of attempted solutions, and at least done something to try to quell it and make sure there's proper messaging all along it so that we're not completely desecrating the street with all these lines and thumps and humps and, you know, islands and everything else, giving you the street that you paid for at the end of the day, without too much alteration. I get the inconvenience question, and like I said, if there's something we can do to lower the inconvenience with it there, with the stop signs there, just let us know. You know, I'm happy to work with you on that stuff.
Yeah, like I said, everything has been done. I greatly appreciate it. Just it's the stop sign zone and that's, yeah.
Yeah, is there a topic for us, I guess, Sean?
Yeah, is anyone else? All right, yeah, I'd like to talk about the zoning process and the zoning advisory committee.
Glad you brought that up.
A mental meeting last week.
Keep interrupting. You're not supposed to speak when we're speaking.
Thank you.
The mental meeting last week, they're announcing a workshop on October tenth. Is that still in place, or have we changed that? Then you know it.
I don't control it, so why are you asking me?
Well, you know things that are happening in the village. Why would I not ask you if you knew something about the workshop? So, anyway, I'm making an announcement.
Just to answer your question, you asked a question, or continue, the zoning advisory committee is the group that is responsible for it. I think the only questions which were up in the air, from what I understood, was that they may want to get boa coordinated in time and lines. And so, they're, I'm going to try to facilitate a call between the two consultants and Matt Earp line this week at some point, and I've heard that news last year as well. I'll work with you to see what time you're available. But you you can see that there's no definitive answer. And so, last I knew was they still were in for October tenth until further notice.
Steve, you do know a few things that others don't know.
I don't know.
Thanks for saying that.
I don't control that time.
I'm not asking you to, I just asked if you had any of more recent information. But because if you don't, and October tenth is still going, that is an announcement worth making. I didn't want to say it without definitively knowing that it was happening. So, October tenth, at the Cornell Corporation, SMTM, is one of the only times the public will have input to this draft zoning law. And it's very, very important that the zoning committee hear from the public because they are doing a radical transformation of this zoning law. So, there's a few things that concern me about what I heard at the last meeting. One of them is that there is content being created in this draft law that did not come from the committee. Somehow it has appeared, and we asked, someone asked the, someone on the committee asked the consultant where this come from, and he was told it did not come from the committee, it came from some other source. And that is not a proper process. It should come, everything should come from the committee. So, that's a problem. There's a few things that are sort of red flags. One is there's basically the destruction of the historic district commission. Again, the the consultant was told to put the language into the zoning that's in there now. The other thing that is in there that is very concerning is they have a language for a planned development district, a PDD, which basically wipes out whatever zoning is supposed to exist for that area and puts in zoning that the developer proposes. And it is both scary and not rational, the the language that's in there now. And again, it did not come from the zoning committee. It came from somewhere else. So, the location.
Ben, I'm going to. I'm still talking. You you'll finish, and then you're here.
Great. So, on page twenty-two of the current draft, four point three point two, location, it says the planned development district shall be applicable to any area of the building of Ballston Spa where the applicant can demonstrate that the characteristics of the mountain satisfy the intended objective of the code. So, they're also saying that you're a planned developer is deemed appropriate, the rezoning land of planned development will replace all use and dimensional specifications contained elsewhere in the code, unless otherwise said. So, any use, any size, anywhere for these PDDs, as long as the Rossi administration approves it. There is no, there is no manliness area for consideration of establishment of a PDD. So, this could happen next to your house. The approval queries are considered, the program is whether and it's a set of the size appropriate for establishing of a PDD. So, what happens in practice is a developer comes in, and if the current administration likes to work with that developer, they can do whatever they want. And this is what happens over and over with PDDs. And it needs, something needs to be in law. We cannot rely on a administration that comes and goes. We have PDDs in the town of Ballston that were created twenty years ago that are like fifteen percent done. The administration that approved them, half of them are probably deceased. And yet, we are stuck with PDDs that continue to operate regardless of what current conditions are, what current people want in those PDDs. So, PDDs are very dangerous, and they basically are cancellation of village zoning. The other thing that's very, very disturbing is a clause in there, again, we don't know where this came from. But we can guess, the cause for removal of a planning board's only board member shall include, and I'll quote here, "any conduct," and there's other things too, "but any conduct." This is the most concerning to me, "any conduct tending to cast doubt upon the integrity or objectivity of a member in performing their duties or any other specific conduct of the member found by the mayor to be detrimental to the proper functioning of the board." So, basically, the mayor doesn't like you, doesn't like your decisions, your opinions on the board. The mayor can get rid of you. And that is quite unprecedented. So, not only does the mayor and his people have control over what gets built, but if they don't like what the planning board is doing, they could just kick off the people on the planning board. It's way too much power in the mayor's hands. The public has to speak out about this because this is a four alarm fire right now, what's what's now in the draft. And I'm hoping that it changes, but people need to be aware. I'd like to put this, this draft is public information. I'd like to make a motion that this draft be put on the village website.
Second.
Do we have a vote or discussion?
You have to.
Well, I just made a motion.
Okay, discussion, first ninety seconds.
So, yeah, so you guys get to.
You are not the mayor.
You are not the mayor. Stop.
Oh, you're raising your voice, Bernard, that.
Let him do his job.
That is horrible, horrible. You raised your voice.
Let him do his job.
Well, he didn't explain what the ninety second.
Everybody. I've had enough. Anybody in the audience?
You get to talk because it's a motion that was not on the agenda.
Ben, excuse me. You do not have the floor. You don't have the floor. Thanks.
I'm explaining what you're doing.
Where can we get the information?
Well, do you support the motion?
I'm confused.
What? I don't.
The motion is to make the information available. That we don't put on the same.
No, you do. See, they're confused. No, you need to explain.
I made it confusing, quite frankly. I think probably what's better is to let that presentation happen. The information will be finalized. I don't even think, how close is this even?
This is the time for the public to.
When's September? The thing is in October.
I'm calling, I'm calling a question.
All in favor, both all.
This is for the public to.
Wait, we have somebody wants to comment.
Just to reiterate that because it's a new motion.
Yeah.
There's ninety cent second public comment.
Yeah, public comment now.
All right, let's go ahead. Ninety seconds, go.
Elizabeth, almost eighty-nine Hyde, I believe this information should be allowed for the public to look at it, to see the process of the zoning committee and to see when things get put in that weren't discussed at committee meetings. I've been going to almost every single meeting and none of those factors, PDDs, the, the planning board appointments, you know, kicking people off a lot was just put in and without the committee discussing it. And that's not the way it's supposed to work. So I think that their drafts should be allowed, should be public information. And so people should see the process of this zoning. Thank you.
Liz.
Like she did with the revenue committee.
Excuse us. We have a roll call.
Justin Bassin?
Yes.
No, I'd like to explain my vote, please, and put it in the minutes. I think we need to make sure that they are ready for the draft to be out there. They, it's September. The event's gonna be in October. I really would like, you know, public involvement. But let's, let's give it a second to be prepared and be ready for the October tenth meeting. So I imagine if people have questions too, they can probably reach out to the chair of the committee as well.
Matt Earpline.
Matt Earpline. So, yeah, no.
Yes, and I just like that, I think, you know, a draft, just like anybody else who does a draft, you put a watermark on it that says draft. People are smart enough to know that it's a draft.
Mayor Rossi.
abstaining. We have no freaking business doing anything right now without discussion from the committee that we entrusted this to. For those that preached to me for the last week or a couple of weeks about committee process, the committee process was utilized in that committee. Apparently you do not trust that committee at this point in time to do what they're supposed to do with the zoning. So you can't have it both ways. My point is, I don't know what's in there. I haven't dug into that degree because it's not my business right now. It's their business to get it molded to where it should be, get the public response when they're ready for the public response. And what has just happened here is so highly inappropriate in a process of allowing this committee to do their work. I am embarrassed right now for the village for what he just did and tried to pull. This is not the time for it. This is disrespectful to people that are wasting, now wasting their time if we ever went in this manner toward it to go, what, every two weeks into a meeting for an hour and then between meetings over and over inside the information, inside the code that's being prepared for them to review, to give comments on, et cetera, is the first pass. As you know, that's not how we work with laws here. We get a draft into an organized format with everybody's input and then we push out to the public because we don't want four alarm fires started involuntarily by somebody that can't sit back and understand that it is not our time right now as trustees or mayor to be influencing these decisions. And what you just did is bull. Abstaining, it's two to two to, two to two to one. The one is a no. For the purpose of vote count, it is two to three. The motion fails.
It's a public document.
I, I don't see anything wrong with transparency.
Okay, Carla, go ahead.
As council to the village, I have not seen the law that is being drafted. And so I don't know what's in it. And my understanding would be that I would look at the draft law to make sure that it is legally appropriate. And then it would go to the board and to the public. And I just haven't seen it yet. I don't know what's in it. I don't know, I, you know, I, I'm not part of it, but I do know I will eventually look at it. I just think that at this point, the committee has the law and the committee has a consultant. And once they want the public to look at it, the public is to look at it. I'm a little concerned that there was a lot of things talked about in the law that I don't know if that's true or not. I don't know if it's in the law. And there are a couple of things, there are a couple, and Ben, if you would like to give me all the research that you have for that and provide it to me so I can look at it.
It's from the draft.
And I don't have the draft because I, I'm not part of the committee yet. And as council, I'll look at it once the committee gives it to me. So I'm just concerned that there's things out there saying, and there's, there's legal terms being used incorrectly. And unfortunately, that's what's going out. So I just need to make sure that for the betterment of the village that I work with Matt and with. It was Chris, right?
Yeah.
Chris, to make sure that whatever is in there is legal. So I don't know if this is the first, second, third, fourth, fifth or seventh draft.
My understanding is it's the first draft that Chris basically devised to create a general framework scenario. And now they're hashing out what to do as a committee. I didn't attend Thursday's, but got a briefing on what generally was going on. And I, that was all I listened and that was it. And that's where the rap from Meyer's standing.
I, I just, it will be absolutely transparent once it's in a form to be transparent. Under, and actually drafts are not boilable, so they're not public documents. So I just want to make sure that, you know, whatever's presented to the public is actually the draft that, that the committee wants presented and that I've had a chance to look at.
So you're saying that this draft is not a public document?
I don't know what you're looking at that. I, I don't know.
It's a draft.
Drafts are not public documents.
The other thing concerns me, Ben has said in the synopsis I got from Friday, basically after me on Thursday, you hold yourself out as a member of the board as if it's a full board mandate you're giving in your discussions. I'm not sure if it's perception, if it's something you're saying, but it's a concern that comes back to me. And as a reminder, ultimately, this board as a, as an entire board will be voting on this. And so no one of us has that right or ability to say, as a member of the public, if you, you, Ben Basken, Joe Public want to give some kind of general statement, have at it. But I think that what the perception is, is that you are sort of overstepping at a time when we're not really supposed to be really involved. We're not. And so that's my feedback to you from what folks had brought to me along the way on this, just a thought.
Well, since you weren't there, you don't really know what happened, but.
Well, there are, there are recordings.
What I was doing, there were, there were incorrect, inaccurate statements made about the process that I felt as someone who's been a part of the process, I wanted to share my opinion of what the process has been and my understanding of what the process is.
We have a consultant that does this for a living, that's driving the process with the board, the committee. I don't know what you mean by it's not a process that is okay. That process is being guided by a consultant professional.
The consultant's effectively been put in the backseat, frankly. And, and other people are driving the bus in this practice, this process. But, yeah, listen to the, to the recording and.
I'll give you, I'll give you some feedback if you want. I don't need your feedback, but if you want to.
I do want to see the draft anymore. If you have draft, just write it. I want to see.
The draft is on Google Drive. It's.
No, can I have what you have? Can you just email it to me?
I took excerpts out and they're in my notes here, so I can send them to you. I do have the full document from. What?
How did you get it?
Off of Google Drive. Everyone has access to that.
Not, not everybody.
I mean, I have access to Google Drive. I just want to make sure that I, I'm reading, you know, it came up. I just emailed Matt saying I'd like to chat with him, just, you know, see, get a, you know, see if, you know, what's going on. And if you have a document that will help me with that conversation.
Yeah, it's the same document Matt has.
Okay, can you send me what you have?
Yes.
Thank you.
Got a motion. I'll just be on it immediately adjourned at eight twenty PM. Justine Fadetsa. It was, it was a narrow defeat there. Discussion, all good. Happy good night. We'll see you in two weeks. We'll let you know where, baseball.